All right, everybody good? Chief, come on over. Okay, we've got a big crowd today. Okay. Well, we're here to talk about something that is really a great step forward for the city, and it represents an extraordinary collaboration between the City Council and the Mayor's Office, and most importantly, people at the grassroots all over this city who want to stop violence, who want to make communities safer. We are blessed by the fact that New York City is the safest big city in America. We continue to make it safer all the time, but we never, ever rest on our laurels. We're never satisfied. We have to keep doing new and better things to continue the work that's really been going on over 20 years to achieve this level of safety and continue to improve upon it. And we also know that in some neighborhoods, there's still too much crime. Some neighborhoods are still too hard-hit, and we will not leave them behind. We will reach every corner of this city with everything we've got to make people safer. Today, we take a big step forward in reducing gun violence in some of our city's most troubled neighborhoods. We're proud to announce the investment of nearly $13 million to prevent shootings before they occur. This is what all of us in government should focus on, stopping problems before they occur. These are the kind of investments we need. They're smart use of the people's money to solve problems in their infancy. As part of an initiative known as the Gun Violence Crisis Management System, we're going to take programs that have initially been in place in five neighborhoods and expand them to 14 police precincts across the city. 14 police precincts that account for 51% of all shootings thus far this year. So think about that for a minute. In 14 of our precincts, we have a majority of our shootings. We know where to pinpoint our efforts. We've been doing that with additional police resources already this year. But this grassroots effort, this effort to reach people, especially young people, and change the course of things, is going to have a profound effect and is going to add a lot to our effort. There's a lot of people to thank, and a lot of people I want you to hear from to understand how important this is and where it's taking us, and how it connects to so many other public safety initiatives we're undertaking. And a lot of people to thank and appreciate. First, I want to thank, of course, our host Harlem Hospital for having us in this wonderful facility. And I want to thank -- we can clap for them. And I want to thank Liz Glazer, the Director of the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, who's done an extraordinary job working with stakeholders across the board and working closely with the City Council to develop innovative approaches. I appreciate her bringing her experience as a former prosecutor and someone who's worked at all levels of law enforcement to this work. I also want to acknowledge the hard work of the City Council in general, and particularly the City Council's Task Force to Combat Gun Violence chaired by Council members Jemani Williams and Fernando Cabrera. Task Force was created at the end of 2011 because there had been a series of shootings in the city, and members of the Council wanted a different kind of response. They delivered recommendations in 2012, started down the path last year. Now these recommendations are really taking shape and reaching far across the city. This is a very important moment in the development of the work of that task force. You're going to hear from our Speaker, and I want to thank her for the extremely effective and consistent partnership on issues of public safety. All she did to help us get more cops on the street, and the initiative the Council took to move towards more of a civilianization approach so we could get more men and women in uniform out, helping to keep our people safe. The Council's played a big role here, and we have all the Council members to thank, but particularly Speaker Melissa Mark-Viverito. Thank you for your leadership. And the Speaker will be up in a moment, and she will introduce all of the Council members who are here, and we thank them all for being here. I want to thank the members of my administration because they believe in connecting all these dots. One of the challenges in government, we've seen it time and time again, is some good efforts are being made by different agencies that are not connected at all, and a lot of times what that means is we're just not effective enough, and a lot of times what it means is the taxpayer's dollar is not used well enough. This team believes in constantly collaborating, something our Police Commissioner believes in deeply as well. He's one of the strongest voices for that kind of collaboration in all of law enforcement in this country, and so a real cooperative spirit animates this effort. I want to thank all of those who have been a part of it and contributed so much. Deputy Mayor Lilium Barrios Peoli, Health Commissioner Mary Basset, Probation Deputy Commissioner Clinton Lacy, DYCD Commissioner Bill Chong. I want to thank everyone at the Department of Education who's been a part of this effort. I want to thank the City University of New York, represented today by Jeff Butts, that's been a part of this effort. And of course, I want to thank our host, HHC, and its great President Ram Raju, and hometown teams clapping for Ram. And someone who we turn to to keep our children safe and who plays a crucial role in this endeavor as well, Chief Brian Conroy, the NYPD Commanding Officer of the School Safety Division. Let's thank Chief Conroy for all he does. Now, this is a comprehensive approach. That's what we believe in. It aims to prevent violence before it happens. It aims to prevent violence in close coordination with a host of other public safety strategies and policing strategies, but in a sense, to get this stopped before the police even have to become involved. This is something I know Chief Conroy and Commissioner Bratton and everyone at NYPD believes in. If we can stop violence even before it begins to take shape, that is the best thing we can do, not only for our communities, but for the people who protect our communities. This relies on the notion of violence interruption. You may have heard this around the country, the interrupters. In many cases, folks who have had a history of involvement with gangs and overcame that part of their lives and went on to be peacemakers, or other community leaders and activists who believed in healing and bringing people together. This approach, all around the country, has been proven as an effective tool. And you'll hear from police leaders around the country that this, to them, is an exciting piece of what we can do to stop violence in coordination with a host of other strategies. The violence interrupters are a community-based solution. Community members talking to other community members and convincing them that violence is not the right path. There's no one who can convince particularly some of our young people of the consequences of their actions more than someone who went down the wrong path and then recovered from it. I've met some of the former gang members, and they're now people who work for peace every day, and their voices are powerful, as they speak from real experience. Excuse me. And they know how to help us find young people at risk and diffuse situations before they get out of control. I'll give you one example. Kiki Brown, an interrupter who worked with SOS Bronx. And Kiki knew about three gangs on a certain day that were unfortunately headed towards conflict. It is an important point about Kiki that that day happened to be her birthday, and she could have looked the other way, and she could have gone out and celebrated, but she believed in her commitment to the community. So she canceled her plans immediately, went out, and one by one, met with gang members and convinced them that they had to back away from conflict. And because of her efforts, there was finally peace, and that moment that could have resulted in a loss of life never came to pass. It's amazing that one dedicated, trained person can literally stop violence at the neighborhood level and save lives in that fashion. It's an incredibly powerful tool, and that's what this initiative is all about, fostering and supporting. It's one of many stories that you're going to hear. SOS Bronx is doing incredible work, and today you'll hear from Ife Charles, who's running this extraordinary effort. Let's thank Ife. And this notion is you work with all sorts of allies. And this is why HHC is a part of this too, our hospitals, our clergy, there's so many different community allies who are brought into this effort. The whole idea is an entire community responds and convinces people to take the right path, and it works. It's worked all over the country. Another powerful example is recognizing that we can help our young people to see their own possibilities, because I'll tell you, people go on the wrong path when they think there's no hope. They go on the right path when they see possibilities ahead and fulfillment ahead. One great example is the MATCH program. Now, this sounds on its first blush like it must be impossible, but it's working. The MATCH program provides daily tutoring in algebra to high school students, including at-risk high school students. It's led to a 44% reduction in violence for the kids involved while improving grades. Why? Because once kids see they can take something that seems insurmountable, and they can take it on, and they can win, it gives them the faith in going down a positive path. We need to do that for our young people. When we don't give them a positive option, we should not be surprised that despair takes over. And that is governing everything we're doing, everything we're doing in our schools, pre-K and after-school, everything we're doing in our housing developments, where 107 recreation centers this summer are open until 11:00 PM or later every day for the first time in 30 years, because we want every young person to know there's someplace positive to be. And I want to thank the City Council again for allowing us, through their collaboration, to make that initiative come to life. We believe that we have the finest police force in the United States of America, and they do extraordinary work every day. And there's a lot we need to do to support our police, and one of the things we need to do is help solve the problem before it occurs at the grassroots with the full participation of communities. We do that more and more. We're going to see crime continue to stay low and then go down in this city. Again, I am blessed to have a partner who believes so deeply in these initiatives and makes something happen, provides leadership, and we would not have this initiative today if it weren't for the Speaker of the City Council. It's my honor to introduce Melissa Mark-Viverito.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I have to say this is an incredibly important moment, an important day where we're making this announcement. I want to thank the co-chairs of the task force, Council members Jemani Williams and Fernando Cabrera. I want to thank the Chair of our Public Safety Committee, Vanessa Gibson, who is here, our Majority Leader, Jimmy Van Bremer, Council members Traeger, Richards, and King, and I know Inez Dickens is here as well, representing this wonderful district and this institution. And all of the members of the different agencies and representatives that are here. As the Mayor said, I think one of the important things that we need to highlight is that for any public policy or for any effort to be successful, to be effective, it needs to be inclusive, and that means that government itself cannot solve a problem. We all have a responsibility as community members to be involved and to be engaged, and this is what this initiative really reinforces and nurtures, is a sense of a holistic approach, that all aspects of the community need to be involved, our faith leaders, our community-based organizations, our family members. It's really all hands on deck. And as we know, New York is the safest big city in the world, and that is a credit to the NYPD, which is one of the best, if not the best, police forces in the world and whose officers serve our city every day. As we know, too often, gun violence devastates some communities much more than others. Last year alone, 54% of all shootings took place in just 14 neighborhoods. The numbers are clear. New York City needs a long-term solution that will protect New Yorkers and permanently reduce gun violence. That's why the City Council created its dedicated Task Force to Combat Gun Violence. And chaired by my colleagues, Jemani Williams and Fernando Cabrera, and working collaboratively with public safety experts and community leaders in all five boroughs, the Task Force worked with the Council to develop a new pilot program to begin to make ours a stronger, safer city for all. And so we're here today to double down on those efforts. I'm proud to be joined by Mayor de Blasio, my Council colleagues, Task Force members, Cure Violence Providers, who I know are also in this room, as we announce the expansion of the city's comprehensive crisis management system to 10 new neighborhoods in need. What started out as a City Council pilot program in five high-needs communities in the Bronx, Brooklyn, Queens, Manhattan, and Staten Island, has now been expanded to provide comprehensive violence prevention and de-escalation services in even more at-risk neighborhoods. Our crisis management system will help save lives. By focusing on the neighborhoods with the highest levels of shootings and working with those at risk for committing violence, our violence interrupters will be able to help stop shootings before they happen. The $12.7 million commitment from the City Council and from the administration will not only fund these new Cure Violence programs, but also provide the wraparound services that we piloted in our model, supporting a full range of professional mental health, conflict mediation, job training, and legal services. These services will help contain and prevent violence and put vulnerable New Yorkers back on track. And with the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice bringing together all of the city agencies that have a role to play in reducing violence, we will ensure the expanded crisis management system will be coordinated and effective. Our community-based approach, in conjunction with the work of the NYPD and the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, will help strengthen community relations in our city and permanently change attitudes about gun violence. So again, I want to thank the de Blasio administration for partnering with the Council on this important initiative to make our city even safer, and my Council colleagues for their efforts, for their leadership to get this programming off the ground. Together we can, and we will bring down gun violence in our city. And I'd just like to say a few words in Spanish. Que hoy aquí anunciamos una inversión de 12.7 millones entre la administración y el consejo municipal para programas de prevención de violencia en comunidades de alto riesgo. Servicios tales como servicios mentales, servicios de mediación de conflicto, servicios legales y desarrollo de empleo serán parte de esta iniciativa, y le damos la gracia al alcalde y a los colegas en el consejo municipal por participar en este esfuerzo.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Speaker. You know, these things happen because people provide leadership. The Speaker's provided leadership in the Council, and then within the Council, there's been real energy and focus on the issue of fighting violence. I have to tell you, I've talked to Jemani Williams many, many times over the last years, and I think almost every conversation included him reminding me of the important work of this task force and the need to continue to expand it. So I'm happy that someone who cares so deeply about this work at the grassroots has achieved so much for this task force and is now seeing it really reach all across the city. A lot of the credit goes to Councilmember Jemani Williams.
First, on behalf of all the people who do this work, I want to say yes! Woo! This is a good day for us. This is a very appropriate place to be having this press conference. Not only is this obviously a hospital and a public health facility that plays such an important role in the work that we're doing. In the 1970s, my father was the chief resident here in Harlem Hospital. He passed away last year, and I'm very proud I could be doing this, hopefully in part to his memory. So I want to say thank you, of course, to the Speaker for her leadership, to the Mayor for partnering, to my co-chair Fernando Cabrera, to the Finance Chair Vanessa Gibson, to the Majority Leader Jimmy Van Bremer, and to all my colleagues that are here today. This is phenomenal, and I want to say thank you in helping us expand the work that we're doing. Our work began, as mentioned, last term when the former Speaker charged Councilmember Cabrera and I to have the Gun Violence Task Force and to make recommendations on how to decrease the gun violence in this city. We started our efforts in five neighborhoods that was mentioned, some of the highest gun rate violence in five boroughs, to target shooting hotspots. So this is focused on hotspots throughout the cities within the precincts to provide intensive interactions to those who will likely commit violence in order to stop them before they're happening. We put out this report December 21st, 2012. I'm very happy that the media is here covering this. It was very difficult to get this out, but we had some very good recommendations. And what has changed is, I thank the former Speaker for her leadership, and I thank this Speaker for tripling down on the work that we had and providing even further leadership. I'm thankful that we had a Majority Leader that was also committed to this, and a Public Safety Chair who was also committed. So the climate in the Council changed to push us forward, and most fundamentally, we now have an administration that wants to partner in this issue and believed in the recommendations that were here. The recommendations included treating gun violence like a public health issue, getting hospitals more involved so doctors, when there's shootings, can inform the people who are doing the work on the ground that there is more work that needs to be done, and they should get there. Funding grassroots groups who were doing this work on the ground, providing wraparound services that are essential. So when we took the Cure Violence model, we wanted to New Yorkize it and make sure that we were doing the work that needed to be done in New York. So we added the wraparound services, mental health, job creation, and workforce development. We added legal services. We ordered community therapy. We put mediation services, all of these things, so we can affect the change that we wanted. Make no mistake, I want to make sure that it's covered. This is a fundamental shift on how we're dealing with gun violence, and I really thank the administration for having this shift. And the thing that I think is the most important, that probably will get covered the least, is there's a coordinating group of agencies that will be helping us with this multi-pronged approach. So it is not just the NYPD that will be focused on this. We need a multi-service approach. It's been unfair to ask the NYPD to do the work of all the agencies that needed to be helped, to be involved, to help the people. It's been unfair to ask them to do these things. Their job is to do law enforcement. They do that well, we have to make sure they're a partner. But there were so many other agencies, like the ones that were mentioned, that need to be involved. The same way that we say we have to send the NYPD services to those same hotspots because of the crime stats, every one of the agencies mentioned should be having the same protocol, sending resources, whether it's mental health, whether it's jobs, to those same areas together, so like a scalpel, we can be working on this very big public health crisis. And that's what's going on today. I don't want to make no mistake about it. We are leaps and bounds, and where New York City goes, so goes the nation, and I really hope that they are following the leadership of the Mayor and the Speaker here today. I also want to make sure we're clear that there's no perfect system. We don't have one now; this may not be one later. But what we do have is people who are dedicated to keep looking at the system and tweaking it. The conversation for public safety should never stop. We have to keep on keeping on and making sure we're tweaking the system so that it works. This will help not only the gun violence, but I believe it'll also help ease the tensions between community and the police departments, so we can view them as a partner in a wider array of services that needs to be done. So I want to say thank you again for expanding this. I look forward to seeing how much further we can go, and I want to thank the groups like the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation that have also viewed what we're doing and expanded upon that as well. So this is very exciting times, and I want to say thank you again.
Couple of quick points I want to thank Jemani Williams for giving us a new verb, New Yorkize. I think in this administration, we're attempting to New Yorkize many ideas, and we thank you for making it clear for us. On the point about treating this crisis as a public health crisis, this is why Dr. Basset is here, because there's a lot of ways to look at something, and if you, again, I think Jemani said it perfectly, if you think, well, we have a great police force, they have to handle it all by themselves, we're not going to get where we need to go. We have to think of this as a health crisis because we're losing so many lives and so many people are being injured. And that's why the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene is a part of this, our schools are a part of it, so many agencies participating with a common vision. That's what's so powerful about this approach. Another fact, Councilmember Williams asked me to clarify a budget item. You were correct. This additional $13 million is on top of $3 million that was baseline originally as part of the work of the task force, so it brings us to almost $16 million in impact. And we think it's going to show us a lot about how we move forward from here. So we're very, very excited about the model that this is going to provide us and how we can use it all over the city. There's another co-chair who has a task force who works so hard in his district in the Bronx as an agent of healing. He does that in his, I don't know which is the day job and which is the night job. His day job as council member, his night job as a pastor, but all to the same point of healing and bringing the community together, Councilmember Fernando Cabrera.
I want to give a special thanks to the Mayor and to our Speaker for the leadership. You know, you can have vision, but without the provision, all you're going to end up with frustration. And so I also want to thank Jemani Williams because it was really his brainchild. I want to give credit to credit, it's really due. We wouldn't, I don't believe we would be standing here with this comprehensive plan if it wasn't for Councilmember Jemani Williams, who really deserves a lot of credit here because the vision was born in his heart. And I want to thank, as I come back to him in a second, I want to thank our colleagues because they were truly there every step of the way. The level of interest for my colleagues is just simply inspiring. But, you know, when Jemani approached me about this, you know, our districts are greatly impacted by what's happening really in the grounds. But one thing that impressed me about Councilmember Jemani Williams is that he did not demand that from the beginning that the resources will first come to his district, or he didn't say, Fernando, we're going to go to your district first, or, you know, help me out here. We went where the need was at. And now, I want you to realize that this is historical. This is the biggest comprehensive program that we have ever had in the history of New York City. Three years ago, I asked, back then, the Commissioner, I said, what kind of a comprehensive program do we have, especially dealing with gangs? Because one of our young people in my neighborhood got shot right in front of my street, shot dead. Another young person got shot, and he became blind. And so I was disturbed. As a matter of fact, that was the reason I was moved to run for office. And just to find out that we really didn't have a systematic, comprehensive, strategic plan that came with intentionality to really work with these young people, it truly baffled me and it shocked me. So today, you can imagine how we feel today. We are ecstatic, we are excited, and I believe that we're going to be able to build from here forward and to be able to literally save lives, not in the generation to come, but our present generation of young people. I want to mention something in Spanish. Muchas gracias al alcalde y al concejal, y al co-líder de este comité para parar la violencia que viene a cuello de las armas. Y en este día, esto es un punto histórico, esto es un punto en verdad que nunca hemos tenido en la historia de Nueva York, donde vamos a tener un sistema, unos programas en 15 áreas de la ciudad de Nueva York para traer transformación y rescatar nuestros jóvenes. Esto es un nuevo día, esto es un día donde otras ciudades de Estados Unidos van a ver lo que nosotros hemos hecho aquí. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much. Have a great day, because this indeed is a great day.
Now, we're going to have one more Speaker come up, and I think she is the real expert here from leading at the front, these efforts. So we're going to have Ife come up in a second, and then I'm going to favor you with a few sentences of Spanish, and then we're going to do, I know you've been waiting for that all day. And then we will do on-topic, and then we will do off-topic. Ife Charles is coordinator of anti-violence programs for the Center of Court Innovation, which oversees SOS Bronx, and SOS Bronx has played a key role in reducing gun violence on the ground. You also played a key role in Crown Heights and the successful efforts in Crown Heights that really in many ways have been the proving ground for this approach. So Ife has been at the front line, has been an innovator, has actually achieved results and proven that this approach works. And we're going to hear from the general of the army here who has shown that this is the way forward, Ife Charles.
My name is Ife Charles and I am the coordinator of anti-violence projects for the Center for Court Innovation. You've heard a lot today about the expansion of Cure Violence models. One of the center's projects, the Crown Heights Mediation Center, was the first in New York City to implement the CV model in the 77 precinct in a Crown Heights section of Brooklyn. The CV program was researched, through the research shown here at CCI is that there was contributions made for reductions in gun violence in our particular catchment area. At its essence, we help young people, young men and women, think about the choices at hand and imagine a different life for themselves because a lot of our young people do not have hope. And many of us end up going to funerals, not for people who die from natural causes these days, but we go to funerals for young men and women between the ages of four and 28. Many of the people that work in this program are formerly incarcerated. You heard the mayor just talk about Kiki Brown. There are several Kikis. There are Latice in Crown Heights, there are Brother Tislams in East New York, there are Sister Kenyans in Queen, there are Brother Corys and Brother Kay in Harlem. There are a lot of young men and women doing this work and doing it because they care about the work and they care about giving back and they've been there and they've done that. We want them to believe in themselves and we're able to tell young people, the gentlemen and the gen, and the women that we just spoke about have been there and done that and can catch the attention of the individuals that you and I might not be able to talk to because there's relations, they understand them better. So for our young people, we want them to succeed. They've been there and done that and we tell them very much, if you don't want to go down the road, that some of our folks go down, have gone down because some of our staff collectively on some teams have spent anywhere from 80 years of prison time based upon incidents that they made wrong choices for in their past lives. With the support of the wraparound service providers, if you've heard the council and the mayor talked about, thanks to Osborne, to the Legal Aid Society, Community and Mental Health Partners, Harlem Mothers Save, Fortune Society, and the Conflict Resolution, that's right, Harlem Mothers Save, we're in Harlem. And Jackie Rowe does a wonderful job and continues to do a wonderful job, so we're blessed for you elder. Conflict Resolution and the schools to address how to handle disputes without pulling a weapon. The countless amount of job training, social support, housing, or just somebody that they can talk to and not someone who's only available for the hour that something is going on, but someone who can be available 24 hours. So the young men and young women on these teams are available to talk to an individual who might be in crises at any hour of the day and they report into them. This is new for New York and I am proud to stand in front of a bunch of folks who really believe in the work that we're doing. This is a collective and a collaborative and you've heard the mayor and you've heard the speaker talk about working together. It is not an us against them, it is a we because we all want to be safe at some particular point of our day. We want to go home and we don't want to hear those phones ring and we don't want parents to be crying or loved ones to be lost. The violent, the gun violence task force to combat anti-gun violence, I have to say to Brother Jomani Williams, Councilman Jomani Williams and Pastor, Councilmember Fernando Cabrera, they have been diligent and have been committed and continue to do so. And it is great to have a speaker who's continuing the movement because this is a movement and it cannot work with individualism. It has to work as a holistic approach and the village believe that we can all come in together and make change. We have to thank the Department of Mental Health and Hygiene because they have been there. This is a crisis, it's an epidemic. I want to thank Mayor de Blasio for your commitment to work as a collective. Thank you. With the communities, city agencies, and private sector to continue to process of gun violence reduction and eventually elimination in New York City, it is my personal belief that if we can work together in New York City to decrease the violence, that we will be setting the template. And I love being a New Yorker because we set trends.
Yes, we do.
That's right.
We New Yorkize.
New Yorkize, that's right, Jomani, New Yorkize. If we can make this happen here, it is the template that will be across the cities in other nations that are suffering. So I want to say thank you, know that you each have a role, but you have an active role. It cannot be a passive role. Thank you.
No, a, a leader is someone who takes us to a better place. That is Ife Charles. Thank her again for what she's doing. Before I go to the program I just announced, Melissa Mark-Virino is going to just add a quick point.
No, because obviously we want to thank everyone and the mayor has his administration here. We definitely want to, we're only as good as our staff and we definitely want to thank Pascal, Margaret, and Regina that are here, who really helped make this effort happen.
Hoy anunciamos otro paso para hacer de Nueva York una ciudad cada vez más segura. Estamos invirtiendo 13 millones de dólares para prevenir la violencia con armas de fuego en los vecindarios de la ciudad con más alto riesgo. With that, we welcome first on topic questions.
Tell us how the violence interruption actually works? Is there a shooting? How the violence disruption actually works? Is there a shooting, the police department calls you guys, you figure out who it is, find someone who's in the area?
Well, I'll, I'll start and I want to offer Ife, Jomani, chief, anyone who wants to jump in after I start. No, the idea is before the shooting even happens. You know, I think what Ife said powerfully is it's a village. We want to recreate the notion of the village, that people see what's happening and stop something before it goes down. So in effect, you, you train people from the community, you hire them into this program, again, some of whom have real experience that gives them a kind of legitimacy. They came back from the abyss and the notion is with their ability to gather intelligence and intervene, they literally interrupt something that might be on the pathway to violence because they had legitimacy and the understanding of how to talk to those who might be on the wrong path. And before it ever gets to the shooting, it stopped. Who wants to add?
I just want to also make sure I clarify something before the press has a field day with the fact that these are formerly incarcerated, these are people who used to be in the life. This is not, that's not a new thing. I mean, if you look at other industries, you look at people hacking the computers, there are people are routinely hired who have the expertise and have done something wrong and learned from it and want to come back and dedicate it to the community. So there's no difference here. I'm hoping two things happen. One, the violence and Ife will be able to expand the violence interrupters. Do we have a caseload? It is a job, so they are working with people who they believe are most likely to be involved in the shooting. They go out all hours of the night when we are sleeping and, and deal with their caseload. In addition, we are hoping that when there is a shooting, the crisis management system goes into effect. When there is a shooting victim that comes into the hospital, that's why the hospital's important, the doctors, the people involved can reach out to the interruptors who can then reach out to all the services that are needed and we can go deal with that because like any other public health issue, when there's an incident, it can spread and we want to prevent the spread of those. So I believe there are two prongs, but Ife, I don't know if you want to expand it.
And Ife, maybe give a little example, look to the question exactly how someone may play this out and give an incident like Kiki or anyone else.
Definitely. So I always try to, to shed the example that the violence interrupters and the outreach workers are like first responders. And so to answer your question, a prime example of what would happen on a given day, we had a situation that took place and this is why we always said there is no boundaries when it comes to bullets. Harlem and the South Bronx are very closely connected. An individual situation that took place in South Bronx, there was a connection to that in Harlem. What happened was that one of our folks on the street team, which is either a violence interrupter and outreach worker, threw their connections on the team, on the streets. And that's something that we need to be clear about. The streets talk a different language to different folks. And the credible messengers that we've had hired, which are the violence interrupters and outreach workers, that language usually initiates a conference with someone else to say, I think something's about to go down. And so what happened on that particular incident is that word came to us because of the connections in the street and the outreach workers and violence interrupters in the South Bronx started talking about, this doesn't just sound like a South Bronx issue, let's reach out to Harlem to have a discussion, let's find out what's going on. And there was some connection. Kiki and some of the other members on our team ended up having conversations with the folks in the South Bronx that was about to initiate a fight and was able to say to them, as they will say in their language, fall back on this, you don't need to start anything right now, there are going to be some consequences if you move on this. And then the Harlem side, that is why it is important that there's cross-communication, there's got to be cross-pollination with all the information from the street teams, whether in Brooklyn or Queens. And so that is how that issue was diffused. Other incidents such as that when in Crown Heights, when on 4th of July, when folks were mobbing, when a group of young people were out there very angry, just trying to probably express themselves in not a positive manner, the Brooklyn team went to them and within 30 minutes had this team of folks, about 100 young people, just stepping away and going back to the original, all because the folks that we hire are folks who know the streets, who've been there and have credibility. You and I can't go out there and do that. I go out there, I'm mom on the block, right? And they'll have that kind of respectful moment. However, someone who's been there, done that, who know the life, who know the language, they have more strength to say to them, that's not what you want to do. Look at me.
Let me ask the chief to add from a police point of view what this means for NYPD.
Good morning. You know, as the Police Commissioner Brad and the mayor have often said, that police work is a collaborative effort and what's great about this, this program and it is a community-based organization. The police have an obviously an important role in reducing gun violence from an enforcement angle, but it's not the only answer. And we are very aggressive in going after gun violence and going after crews and gangs. Operation Crew Car is a perfect example, is a big success in a takedown right here in Manhattan. But we need to work together with all our city agencies, with all our community groups to build that trust in the neighborhood to continue to reduce violence further, even more than it has been already over the last 20 years, as the mayor mentioned. So this is great news and also for my personal thing, I see as the commanding officer of the school safety division, to have a school component here for conflict resolution inside the school and the match program, as the mayor mentioned, is another great component. We've had tremendous success in reducing violence inside school over the last several years, but even one incident is too many. So we want to continue that effort and all kinds of different ways we can look at to achieve that goal is certainly we welcome it. So, thank you.
Assuming the five precincts, that's where this program has already been implemented?
Be done to be implemented, yeah. Because last, it started last year, so it's still fairly early in this experience.
So I was, that kind of leads into my next question, wondering whether or not there is any evidence that this is proven?
Crown Heights, come on over, Ife. The exemplar was Crown Heights, which even started before the city council fully engaged. So let's just give a little bit of the history of Crown Heights and how long it's been in the city.
So the Crown Heights Mediation Center was the first CV implementation in New York City. And we started in 2012. And we did an internal research and the project is still being, a lot of these programs are still being evaluated and research is still being done. But an internal research was done and we can find out on the website of www.courtinnovation.org that has the research document. And what was shown in Crown Heights within a particular catchment area, I'm quoting this from two years ago, reading the article, is that there was a 66% reduction in the shooting incidents that took place within our particular catchment area once the program was implemented. And what you need to understand is that we are not going into the entire 7-7 because we cannot do this. I think about this when we think about a disease, we want to quarantine in a particular area, the area that is deemed with the highest incidence of shooting. We want to saturate that area with public education materials. We want to have outreach workers and violence interrupters highlighting and identifying young men and women between the ages of 16 to 24 that can say, these are the folks that are out there that might be involved in wrong behavior. And then we constantly work with them. Think of a sponsorship program. Think of a young man and a young woman who might have been addicted and he or she is now in some sort of recovery and has a sponsor. That is how I look at our outreach workers and our violence interrupters. In addition, a clearer picture is you have Red Cross and the fire department. If there is a fire, the fire department comes in and they put that fire out. That's what the violence interrupters do. And then the support from Red Cross would be related to our outreach workers. So that is how this model is about, quarantining, quarantining an area and then saturating the area with some sort of antibodies to help eradicate the violence that will continue.
I can't really top that, but I just wanted to make sure that we added, the areas, the five areas and some of those areas, there were people doing this work before they were properly funded. So I want to make sure that we acknowledge that as well. The funding didn't get to everybody, although there were people doing the work before last year. And there is some anecdotal evidence when you look at the data that it has been working in those areas. And it's about, it's census tracts that we looked at for the expansion, about 10, 20,000 people, maybe a little bit more. And so for the expansions, we looked at three years' worth of data to figure out where we're going to expand. I do want to make sure, I said thank you to all my colleagues and particularly to the Black Latino Agent Caucus, the co-chairs here, Andy King, they were also very supportive in one of the number one issues in the Black Latino Agent Caucus to make sure it was properly funded. And lastly, it's important that we mention, when we're speaking to the young people, we're asking them to put something down, we want to make sure they can pick something else up. And this year, for the first time, there was 100 job slots from DY City that were given to the five existing areas. And they were able to give that out to the young people on their caseload. We're hoping that we'd be able to expand that to the other areas next year. Oh, they, it's all the evaluation aspect, so, sorry. That's where, that's where CUNY is involved. So we do, we are very big on evaluation to make sure that we are evaluating what's going on and we look forward to when John Jay in particular finishes that. And I know we shout out, but I want to give a shout out again to Liz Glaser, who's been phenomenal in moving this forward. And Mac Jay will be the coordinator of the entire system. So thank you.
Just more on the violence interrupters. First of all, how many are there going to be? Can you just clarify, is this actually a job they get hired to pay for or are they more like volunteers? And when you say they have a caseload, how are the people identified who are in their caseload, is it based on past law enforcement contact or how are, how are they actually chosen?
Let's give Liz a chance to speak to it, if you would like, or do you want?
Ife's our case.
Ife's going to talk to it, okay. Try, I'm trying to pass the ball around here. Okay.
The violence interrupters and outreach workers are paid staff. They are, because of their street credibility, they do not get caseloads assigned to them. They run a caseload anywhere from 10 to 15. The outreach workers, based upon the relations with the violence interrupters, remember the violence interrupters are the firefighters, they put out the fire. They go to a situation and because they live in the community, most of our violence interrupters are from those particular catchment areas. They then, once they put that fire out or put that fight out, they identify the young man or young woman who is most likely the leader within that particular group and refer them to the outreach workers. That is why there's an important communication between outreach workers and violence interrupters. They work hand in hand. It's like a treatment plan. I know I'm going back to this, but it's a treatment plan. You have your surgery and then you have the treatment team behind that to follow up. And that's how that works with us. So they have that caseload of 10 to 15. Additionally, and Jomani Williams just remind me about this, we don't do this work by ourselves. The wraparound service providers that have been assigned to us to work with us, to help us in that treatment recovery plan are very important. And I neglected to mention Fortune Society, who was one of those agencies that were working with us in the past. So that is how, I hope I answered your question as far as how many people, the normal staffing pattern is usually four outreach workers to four violence interrupters. And then you have a program manager and any administrative support that you have. But that's what the staffing pattern looks like and that's why it's important for us to focus on a very small concentrated area rather than to exhaust ourselves by covering something larger.
Does anyone else know how many there will be hired in all of these?
Oh, that's, uh, how many is going to be hired?
Will be deployed and hired in all of these precincts.
Total number of youth workers, does someone have that figure?
No.
Okay, let's, we'll come back to a clear answer.
So then how, how is the success of the pilot program measured, other than anecdotal?
Well, I think the example that Ife gave, you saw a reduction in shootings. That's one of the best ways to measure.
Whose data is that, NYPD?
No, that, yeah, of course NYPD. That's, that's where we get our data on shootings. So, you know, Crown Heights, and I want to say, just broaden it for a second. In Crown Heights, because of these efforts, you saw a reduction in In Crown Heights, because of these efforts, you saw a reduction in shooting in the direct area where the youth workers were involved. It's very similar to what you've seen in the last couple of months. When NYPD added additional resources to some precincts that were having trouble, you saw in reports recently how the numbers of shootings went down. I was at Ingersoll Houses on Friday night, one of our recreation programs in Nycha Development, where over the last month, shootings and murders have gone down compared to previous timeframes because of the presence of those recreation programs. So, you know, in the end, the information we have, we always want to keep deepening it. We always want more examples. We always want to look at things over a deeper timeframe, a longer timeframe. But I think we know already, from the Crown Heights example and from examples around the nation, that this has a direct impact on the number of violent incidents and the number of shootings. Please.
And in East New York, the 70th precinct, there's been a tremendous lowering of the shootings. As a matter of fact, Man Up Inc. is the cure violence model provider over there. They went a whole year without a shooting at one point within their catchment area.
Okay, we're staying to media questions right now, but I also want to make sure that when we're finished, the media talks to some of the people who are assembled here or doing this work on the ground. Yes?
Can you talk about how these programs are going to expand into the new neighborhoods? Is there a ramp up process or a timeframe? And how long will it take to have these programs fully deployed in the new neighborhoods? So the interrupters and the wraparound services?
The funding obviously is here to get it done in this fiscal year, but who wants to speak to the specific ramp up?
There is a ramp up period. Unfortunately, some of it, we can't do anything about. Getting the money to the groups has been the one thing we've tried our best to make a little easier. It's hard to do with the rules and regulations. So that's probably the biggest hindrance to actually getting the ramp up. But we have the funding this fiscal year, so hopefully we'll get it to them and get everybody ramped up. There are some areas that don't necessarily have an organization ready. So they're looking for the organization in the area or one that can expand to that area. And this is not about people trying to change the mission to do the work. We want to make sure we find people who are ready and willing and have experience doing that work. So yes, there's a ramp up period. We did get some things on the ground for this summer. We believe by next summer, usually when spikes go up again, everything in all the neighborhoods are going to be clear. And it's important to mention that, which is the most important, and hopefully you guys mentioned it in the, when you talk about it, the agencies that are going to be coordinated under Mauchay are going to start long before next summer. So they're going to be providing services to those areas, hopefully immediately. So that's an important facet. It's not as sexy as other things, but I think it's one of the most important things that really shows the change and shift in how we're doing this.
On the question around timing, sorry, we're just doing media questions now, my apologies. The, on a question of timing, we can get you an answer on the groups that have not had any contracts with the city, how long it'll take to finish that process. But the ones that do have contracts already of any kind with the city, pretty much can get the funding immediately. So we'll get you the breakout on that.
Do you think you don't have organizations out of these, you know, places where you're expanding? So you're still looking for organizations to run these programs in some of these new precincts where you're expanding the program?
Yeah, but I want to emphasize, we have, New York City is blessed for decades with a history of youth-oriented organizations, youth workers. This is a very, you know, deeply developed element of the nonprofit world in New York City. So we think we're going to be able to find good partners in each of these neighborhoods.
You spoke a little bit earlier about some of the other programs that you've been rolling out to combat gun violence in certain precincts and neighborhoods. And I was wondering if you could speak a little bit to whether you think they've been successful so far this summer? I mean, I know last week, I'm sure you saw the CompStat statistics from last week, that showed a bit of a spike the last week compared to the year before for shooting incidents. So just something to get.
Well, I think we have to look at, obviously shootings are a particular measure, we're looking at all crimes. So the, a couple of things I would say. The overall approach, you know, this moment, we're about 3.5% down in crime overall compared to last year this time. We're down 23 murders today compared to last year at this time. Those are good indicators. We are concerned about the shooting numbers, but we've seen some real movement over these last weeks as we flooded the zone, as we got more officers to the precincts in greatest need. Again, the youth programs, we believe, are already proving to be very effective in the Nycha development. So what we've got so far in Nycha, what we've got so far in the target precincts, shows a turn starting to happen. And we believe that that, and that's a set of strategies we're going to be reinforcing deeply in the coming weeks and months. So we believe you're going to see continued improvement on the shootings.
Is there any effort to get private money to help finance this?
We accept private money. Does anyone want to speak to the specifics of our desire for private money? I mean, we, you know, we know with these public resources, we can get started, but we certainly want to deepen it.
It would definitely be helpful, particularly, that money would be able to help get the money to the ground quicker. So the government money is, as I said, held up in paperwork sometimes. So if people are out there that want to help with this, definitely private money is helpful in that we can get the money to them quicker. But I don't think that we have anybody.
Right. I mean, I think the Center for Court Innovation, for example, has been a great partner with the city. You know, we're certainly going to encourage resources to flow into it. But I think our central focus right now is to take the public resources we've put in and apply them aggressively so we can have an impact in these 15 areas.
So following up on that point, how is the program different from the Young Men's Initiative?
Well, I'll start, and anyone who wants to add in, feel free. The Young Men's Initiative has a lot of important components, and all these things ultimately are working in the same direction. But the notion of this interruption strategy, as you heard from Ife, this is something that's still pretty nascent in New York City. It's proven to be very successful in other places. It's proven to be successful in Crown Heights. It's time to take this strategy and apply it more broadly. So I think Young Men's Initiative looks at a whole host of ideas, you know, how to keep people in school, how to prepare them for jobs, a whole host of possibilities. This is a very targeted strategy to get at young people who may be trending in the wrong direction, who may be tempted by violence, to literally interrupt that path, to stop violence, and start the process of healing and bringing them back. Because there's a lot of redemption stories out there. There really are. They don't make the front pages all the time, but there are a lot of them. And the work, NYPD does this all the time and all the other agencies represented, we are trying constantly to get people to the right path. And this interruption approach is crucial because it stops violence and it gives people a chance to get to a path for redemption. Last question on this one.
Mr. Mayor, obviously this has been on the works for a while, but because of the tensions that we see with, between the community and the NYPD, a lot of people might be saying that they say, oh, this is a way to exclude the police. What would be your answer to that?
Well, you just heard from the chief. This is part of a strategy that Commissioner Bratton believes in deeply, and the NYPD believes in, and I believe in, because it is complementary to the police. Everyone can do different things. You know, we know that, for example, for some young people, it's a teacher in their lives that puts them on the right path, or is the one that can help them overcome their problems. For some, it may be a member of the clergy. But for kids who already unfortunately have gotten involved in gangs and crews, sometimes the only voice that will be relevant to them is one that can speak from the same experience. And I think what Ife has done and her colleagues have done, to turn people who have already found redemption, have already turned their lives around, I've spoken to some of these young people, it's an extraordinary thing. They found their way back from the abyss, and now they want to help others. And that's something I can't do, Ife can't do, the chief can't do. Only someone who's been down that road can do that for them, like so many other. I love the recovery analogy. So many other recovery approaches that we know, substance abuse and others. The only person who can really talk to you in an effective way is someone who's experienced it themselves. So it's absolutely complementary. And I can say one thing from my constant dialogue and constant work with key figures in NYPD every single day. They love nothing more than a crime that never happened. They love nothing more than a cycle of violence being interrupted, and they are looking for every ally that can help them get there. Let's go to off-topic.
Commissioner Bratton yesterday made a comment on the radio saying people should sue the arrest of the police officer who was arrested, and they should argue their case in court rather than on the street. What do you think about that?
He's absolutely right. There's no question about it. Commissioner Bratton, to his great credit, talks about democracy a lot. He frames all this work we do as part of the nature of democratic society. In a democratic society, we invest in our police responsibility for enforcing the law. When a police officer comes to the decision that it's time to arrest someone, that individual is obligated to submit to arrest. They will then have every opportunity for due process in our court system. Now, you know, as Commissioner Bratton says constantly, arrest is one of many tools. There's a lot of other tools that police officers have. Look at what Mr. Kelling said the other day. Arrest is obviously not always the best tool, not always the goal. But once an officer has decided that arrest is necessary, every New Yorker should agree to do what they need to do as a citizen and respect the police officer and follow their guidance. And then there is a thorough due process system thereafter.
Philadelphia is making its presentation for the DNC today. Can you tell us why you think the convention should not be in Philadelphia? And also, Ed Rendell made the comment that he felt New York did not have the spirit and people would be too blasé about the convention, and also that the subway was too hot. So if you could just respond to that.
Wow, I see bait. I should really take that bait, shouldn't I? What, Marty? No, I shouldn't? Oh, okay, I won't. Good try. I offer only peace and love to the city of brotherly love. The mayor nutters a friend, he was with us at Gracie Mansion for our US Conference of Mayors meeting on Monday. I have nothing bad to say about Philadelphia. I have only good to say about New York. And we believe, and there's a lot of feeling for this, I want to thank Speaker Mark Verrito gave a powerful presentation to the site selection committee the other day. We're united. The response from elected officials, from community leaders, from business, from labor has been extraordinary. What we've said to the site selection committee is, we have the finest police force in the country, you'll be safe. The MTA knows how to get more people around better than any transit agency in the country. We have great hotels and restaurants. Barclays is one of the newest arenas in the country and one of the best 24-hour nightlife. Thank you, Melissa. The, we have the whole package. And obviously, we have a lot of people in this town who provide a lot of support for the Democratic Party, and the resources will be there for the convention. So we've got a lot of pluses. And we know it's a competition, and we are working hard to win it. But we're going to go about our business by talking about what's good about us, not what's bad about other people.
German artists contacted some media outlets to claim responsibility for changing the flags atop of a bridge. They've offered to appear as proof that they did it. Two parts. One is, do you think there's a, do you believe them? Does the police department agree with that assessment? And secondly, do you feel like they should be prosecuted?
Well, you should, first of all, turn to NYPD for an answer on the first point. The judgment on whether their claim is real or not rests with NYPD. And I know they're looking at that video, and they're going to come to a decision about what they feel about it as part of their investigation. Oh, they've talked to me both. Again, that's being looked at still, and there's not a firm decision yet. So you'll get an answer from them once they've completed their investigation. As to the question of whether they should be prosecuted, I am not a law enforcement professional, but from everything I know, that looks like trespassing and that looks like other types of charges. Again, I'm going to leave it to NYPD to answer in specific. But if they have violated law, of course they should be prosecuted.
There are reports that there is a MRSA problem at the Fire Academy, that several of the probies have contracted it and that they're cleaning.
You're saying the disease? Okay, well, I'm going to bring Dr. Bassett forward. That is news to me, and let's look into that, but let's have Dr. Bassett come forward.
Well, thank you. I'm afraid that I am not aware of this report yet, so I'll have to get back to you. You're talking about multi-resistant staph aureus infection, which is, which is something that we do track, so I'll be able to get you that information.
Can you talk a little bit about how virulent it is and the problem with MRSA and...
Well, this is a well-described problem in medical facilities and one that we track at the Health Department. It's one that's not easy to solve for hospitals and other settings where the bacteria becomes entrenched. So, but the specific instance you're speaking about, I haven't researched about yet, so I'll have to get back to you.
Yeah, I want to make sure that we don't speculate. So, you know, we're going to get you a formal answer in the course of the day, and I'd say to all your colleagues, when we hear reports like this, and one thing, chief, you'll appreciate this, Commissioner Bratton always reminds me, the word preliminary is a very important word in this work we do. A lot of times, reports are not accurate. A lot of times, reports are only partially accurate. We're going to take the question you've raised, Dr. Bassett will look into it, we'll talk to Commissioner Nygros, and we'll give you an answer in the course of the day.
Mayor, the city announced subsidy programs for homeless families in shelters this morning. Can you talk about, apart, do you think that it's serving enough, getting enough homeless families out of shelters? I understand it's about 14,000 of the 55,000 families. And can you also talk about the breakdown in city and state funding of those programs?
Yeah, this is a start. I think the central answer to your question is, we've got a lot more work to do. But it's a start. We've got to really redouble our efforts to help people out of shelters. Something I've spent a lot of time working on as a council member, previously chair of the General Welfare Committee in the council, as public advocate now as mayor. We're not going to accept a situation where so many people end up in shelters. There's a lot of things we can do about it, thank God. The biggest thing we're going to do is build and preserve 200,000 units of affordable housing. That's going to start to change the dynamics in the city about the availability of affordable housing, which is really the central problem. The cost of housing and the availability of affordable housing is what's fueling this crisis. We're also within that going to have a very substantial number of supportive housing units, meaning units for people with particular challenges who need services attached, and that's a big piece of the Affordable Housing Plan. Of course, that's going to take years to get all that online. In the meantime, we have proven tools. Anti eviction legal services, rental subsidies. And you see in these new approaches, some of these tools being brought into play very quickly. The state has been a good partner in this. They recognize the crisis, they're putting resources in. This is the beginning of what I think will be a larger collaboration. So the answer is, we, these are important steps that will start to bring down the numbers of people in shelter, but they're only first steps of a much bigger strategy.
There's a report this morning alleging that you are more willing to decide with Reverend Sharpton as opposed to Commissioner Bratton. Wonder if we can get a reaction?
It's idiotic. And look, I have a high pain threshold when it comes to untruths being told in print, but this is ludicrous. It's inappropriate, it's idiotic. I don't know how many times I've said, we have the finest police leader in the United States. And I believe that in my heart. I think Bill Bratton is doing an extraordinary job. So I'm kind of sick of this notion of, let's make everything about personalities and conflict. We are blessed to have Bill Bratton as our commissioner. And he's doing a great job, and he and I are absolutely united in our approach to fighting crime and bringing police and community together. We share a vision of bringing police and community together. That's why stops are down, that's why marijuana arrests are down, that's why you see efforts like the interrupters being fostered and supported along with the cooperation of the NYPD. So I would wish that people would not talk to unnamed sources and would actually ask me. I am quite available to answer the question.
I'm going to try to get into my question. You know, one last question. About what you think the administration is going to be doing?
Wait, I heard the first part, but let's do that second part again?
What you think the administration is going to be doing? And the third part is, what you think the authorities may not go on their way through this path?
On the first part, I feel very good about our presentation. I don't get in the speculation business. I can't get in the minds of the site selection committee. It's not their job to show their hand to us. They make sure to keep their own counsel until they've seen all the cities and go through their deliberations. But I can say, again, a thank you to Speaker Mark Verrito, Senator Schumer, Senator Gillibrand. You know, so many people participated with real energy and passion. You know, the 70-plus members of the host committee that have already signed on. So, I think we put our best foot forward, and I think we proactively addressed a lot of the obvious issues that that committee would want to look at. It's the same as for anywhere. What will the delegate experience be? Will there be enough venues for all the things they want to do? Can the arena handle what they want to do? How does the transportation and the security work? I think it's impossible for anyone who puts together an event to come here and not be impressed by the NYPD, and not be impressed by all that we do in terms of logistics and transportation. So, I feel very good that they got a lot of the answers to the questions they had, and that we left them with a very good imprint of what we could provide. To my fellow New Yorkers, I think it's straightforward. There's no question that this convention would be a huge economic boost. You're talking about people coming in from all over the country, all over the world. That has a couple of effects. It's not just short-term spending, because remember, the convention buildup is a big process. So, a lot of hotel rooms, a lot of spending on vendors, a lot of impact over months and months and months leading up to the convention. But then you're also talking about tens of thousands of people coming to the city, many of whom will be here for the first time. And I think I can speak on behalf of New York City and Company, which has done an extraordinary job developing tourism in this city. Now, over 54 million visitors last year. What happens is, people come to New York once, they keep coming back. So, we want people to have that first experience, and we always want to show off New York to the world. We did that very effectively during the Super Bowl, we're going to do it again during